Going to go ahead and start the Monday, November 8th City Council meeting. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Andronico.
Present.
Counselor Kane.
Present.
Counselor Dubana.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Mahoney.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Present.
Counselor Palmucci.
Present.
Counselor Phelan.
Present.
President Liang.
Present.
Nine members, you have a quorum.
Thank you. If we could all just put ourselves on mute in honor of all the women and men serving both here and abroad, and as it is going to be Veterans Day this Thursday, if we could also remember them as well. Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, could you read open meeting law, please?
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Thank you. And in accordance with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, signed by Governor Charles D. Baker on June 16th, 2021, extending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the Quincy City Council will be convening via remote video conferencing services that will air on Quincy Access Television, QATV channel, QATV 9, Government Access. Madam Clerk, first item on the agenda.
2021-102, an appropriation for 401,000 to Park Department for Furnace Brook Golf Course operational expenses for FY22 revenue.
Thank you.
motion to approve.
Yeah, we have a motion to approve by Counselor Kane. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second to my Counselor McCarthy. Are there any questions on this item before we move on to you, Counselor Palmucci? Go ahead.
Yes, I was just curious. I know Mr. Murphy, I think, is on. I had emailed earlier asking about the capital, the capital costs that the golf course might bring. Is he on? Mr. Murphy?
I believe I did see him. Let me just make sure he can unmute himself. Mr. Murphy, are you there?
Yes, I am. Through you, Madam President. Our primary focus, Counselor, is on the clubhouse facility. As you know, those familiar with the course, the current clubhouse is basically a converted house that was built in 1926 that doesn't meet a lot of the standards required of a public building. So I think the primary focus for capital investment at the course will be replacing the clubhouse building. We're very early in the conceptual design process. We've got to meet with the Ward Counselor and the community before we advance that to a point where we're looking for an appropriation from the council. But, you know, my guess is our original class estimates from the architect, based on the type of building we're looking at, similar in scope to what you see there now, is probably anywhere from a $5 to a $5.3 million building. The other piece of that, the other piece of that is the maintenance shed. I'm sorry, Counselor.
No, go ahead. Finish.
The existing maintenance building that they're operating out of right now is basically a lean-to. It's an old cinder block building with a leaky roof, and they've kind of converted some pieces of metal to cover up some of their equipment. And it's far from a best way to operate. So we recognize that the members up there, understanding that their 50-year lease was going to expire, were not going to invest in any significant capital expenditures that they weren't going to control after the lease expired. So we're going into the size wide open, recognizing that the primary focus is going to be on the clubhouse building and the maintenance building.
Thank you. And part of the memo we received from you today, sent by Mr. Walker, had indicated that the golf course had run at a profit, or at least break even. Is that right?
From an operational standpoint, that is our expectation. So there's two pieces, this Counselor. So the business model up there for years has been a member-driven model, where there was some outside play. It was a semi-private course. They weren't technically a private course. The lease required them to allow public use of the course. I do think that this will be marketed as a public course. So in addition to maintaining the membership business model up there, and a few of the night leagues that they have appear to generate quite a bit of revenue, you know, the city's goal will be in marketing the course as a public course and generating more tee times if you will up there. So our expectations is that the requests before you tonight will be met, and then some with the revenue generated from the course.
Okay. And does that take into account the capital investment that'll be needed? I mean, has that been scaled out over a number of years?
Yeah, if you take, through you, Madam President, if you take a look at what the capital that's going to be needed, I think if you combine the historic appropriation, the council may remember that it was an odd mechanism that each and every year would actually appropriate the tax burden and pay the city back through the budget process. If you combine what we expected to be surplus revenue with that figure, I think even with those capital expenditures, we should be close to break even.
On an annual basis?
Yes.
What does that have to do with taxes? I didn't get that. I didn't get why you linked that. What did that mean? What did you mean by that?
So each and every year, this body would be asked to approve a certain amount through the budget process. There would then, there was some strange mechanism in the lease agreement that the city would essentially pay itself the tax burden of the course. So each and every year, we would appropriate, the council would appropriate a certain amount of money, anywhere from 100, I think it was reduced last year, but anywhere from approximately 130,000 up to 175,000 a year. It was already built into the budget each and every year for the Furnace Brook Golf Course.
Oh, okay, I get it. So you're saying that it was a net loss when we weren't operating it of a couple hundred thousand, whereas when we're operating it, the tax, that net loss from the tax we're paying ourself, as well as the capital investment, would be offset by operational revenue?
Essentially.
Okay. All right. Did the city do anything in terms of looking for private entities to lease the course or to take it private?
Not to my knowledge, Counselor. I think that if you take a look at the golf courses that existed in the city for many years, be it this course itself essentially was leased, if you will, or we have Granite Links down the street. Now, one of the, I think, goals of the mayor in this particular project is to create a truly public golf course. With respect to the way that this course was formally run and respect to the folks at Granite Links, there remain a number of barriers to access, to introducing people to the game of golf, that we're seeing Furnace Brook Golf Club is an opportunity to work with our recreation department to really introduce many more of our residents. And golf is a pretty exclusive sport. They've done a very good job with some youth clinics there. The golf team, Quincy High Golf Team plays at Furnace Brook. But the truth is that there are a overwhelming percentage of people in our community that will never get a chance to play golf, and we're hoping to utilize this asset in a manner that expands opportunities for people to play golf. And I think that if we brought in an outside partner, we've seen, right here in our own city, that that would likely reduce those opportunities if we give up some of the control over how it's utilized.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. You make a good argument in favor of the golf club, of the golf course. I still have some reservations. I didn't know that this was going to be voted on tonight. I thought I was going to go to finance. So, you know, until, for me, I don't know that it's a good idea or a bad idea at this point. I, again, for me, I would like to see what the options are in terms of the course either being taken over, the lease, or the management of the course being subcontracted out to a third-party entity. And the way to do that would be an RFP and see what interest there is. If there's zero interest, you know, then the answer is simple, that this is the only path. But without knowing that, I feel as though taking on the burden of the golf course and everything that comes with it, from, you know, the annual salaries to, and granted, they aren't terribly much, I mean, you're talking about three people, but taking on salaries and the additional responsibilities, more so in the long-term capital costs of the course, you know, $5 million clubhouse needing to be done relatively soon, that's a big ask. So really, what we're being asked to do tonight is not vote necessarily to fund the golf course alone, but to adopt a policy whereby the city, and again, I get that we already technically own the golf course, but where the city maintains the operation of the golf course. It's almost very similar to the discussion we're having about the Quincy College. You know, we're being asked to pay for it, but not necessarily take it over. Whereas in this, we're being asked to take it over and pay for it. So I just don't think that the policy piece of it has been fleshed out enough for me and enough that we, and I'm not satisfied that we've explored all of our options to not put the taxpayer on the hook for a golf pro and $5 million clubhouse that will need to be built. So for now, I'm going to vote no on this. You know, whether it passes or doesn't pass, I think we should explore some other options here. But that's it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Palmucci. Counselor McCarthy, then Counselor Mahoney, then Counselor Phelan. Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, Mr. Murphy. I think, Dave, what we have in front of us really, you know, was what we didn't have earlier this year. When we first had this in front of us on the budget, it was lumped together. The breakdown in the finance narrative that you give clears up this 401 that will keep the golf course operational for the next six months after January 1st. Into, rolling into Counselor Palmucci's comments, I think the meat and potatoes of the golf course through a presentation and as the city gets his hands around it to keep it moving over the next six months is the right way to go. And that when we get near budget time again, or even before that, probably way before that, we'll see a presentation of the clubhouse, the layout, other thoughts that probably haven't been formulated yet and really get a better view of the golf course going forward. I want to thank you for breaking this down, Dave. I know I bothered you a few times in just trying to find out how a golf course operated. And I know you've done your homework over the past six months, so I appreciate it. I'll be, as I did, I seconded it. I'll be supporting this to keep it moving forward. And then look forward for a more in-depth presentation with more in-depth numbers as we go along. So thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you, House of McCarthy. Counselor Mahoney and Counselor Phelan.
Thank you very much. So I guess I'm a little disappointed because when we said that we were taking this out of the budget, I thought we were going to have that kind of robust conversation about this, not a two-page memo with a note on the back with the numbers. And, you know, it's not to say that your memo isn't detailed, but you're, you know, some of the things that are said in the memo, we don't have a copy of the lease agreement. We don't know, you know, one of the things that you talk about, looking back at the golf course five years to kind of get an idea of what the costs were for the golf course. We, as a council, are not getting a view into that. We should have a view into that because we're taking this on as a city entity, paying people salaries, paying their pensions, paying their health care, and we're not seeing what they had prior to us taking that on. I realized that the lease was coming to an end. I brought this up several years ago, and I asked if there was any public meetings on these things. And I was told there were. I went back and researched it. There was no public meetings in regards to this lease coming to an end. And in this memo, it says that you've been working on this for 18 months. So for 18 months, you've been discussing what you were going to do with Furnace Brook Golf Course, yet it was in the budget for 2022 last spring. We pulled it out to have a discussion about it, and we're getting a memo with the attachments provided to us on Friday night. And we're being, and it's going to move to a vote right now. So this is, to me, an example of extremely poor planning on the administration's part to put this before us. And it's creating us to have a need to vote on something in an emergency to get this onto a budget, which I'm not going to be supporting because I think the full presentation for the public should be done. So you're asking the taxpayers of the city of Quincy, once again, to pony up to have a golf course with the future, with the future thing in this presentation, like where it says likely to see growth as a public course, should see increase with increased public use. And then we have a clubhouse that's going to be designed. So there's a lot of things in this presentation that tells us, we don't really know. We're kind of rolling the dice on this. We're going to get into a new market, and it's going to be the golf course market. And then we're going to have, as I look through this memo, I have all sorts of notes that I thought we were going to have this robust conversation about, and I thought I was going to go to finance. So I'm really shocked that we're not going to finance. But it says here that, you know, significant changes in revenues, that the prior, you know, Furnace Brook Golf Course didn't make any money on food. It made it all in the bar. Who's going to be carrying the liquor license? Is that going to be the city of Quincy? Is that going to be somebody else? Who's taking on that risk? I don't know. The public doesn't know. But we know that we're going to be taking it on as of January, because I'm sure this is going to pass. I won't be supporting it because I don't, this is not what I anticipated. This is going to go up for an RFP, that there'll be a new clubhouse. You just told us that's going to be about another $5 million for the city of Quincy to pony up for a golf course so that we can all go golfing. And then the other thing that it says here is that it's not, you know, that we're going to see increased people coming. I don't know. I don't know because we don't have anything in front of us to show us what Furnace Brook Golf Course had as far as capacity for people to go and play at. It's a nine-hole golf course. It's not 18 holes. It's a half of a course. And you're expecting that more people are going to come play at it. I'm not sure if that's the case. I know for a fact that Furnace Brook Golf Course had tried to extend their membership further down to the South Shore, and that was not successful. So I'm not sure where the new members are going to be coming from. I mean, I'm not trying to say that this is, it's not to say, I don't know if it's a good idea or a bad idea. What I do know is that this memo came before us on Friday night last week. Last spring, we were asked to put it into a budget. It wasn't brought before us. There's no transparency. We're just, we're adding more people to the budget. And again, you know, poor planning on the administration part doesn't constitute an emergency on my part. So I'm going to be voting no on this because I really, truly believe that what we're missing here is that this golf course wasn't, the lease wasn't going to end yesterday. It was going to, we knew about this, this administration knew about this lease going to be ending for the last six years. And then every year that I've been on it, basically, came before us and I asked. And at least three years ago, I said, what's happening? Do we have any public meetings about it? And I was told that there were public meetings, that I went back and looked, and there was never a public meeting on it. And this memo says you've been talking about it for 18 months. And the first I'm hearing about it or seeing about it was in the budget and then in this memo. So it's very disappointing to me. I'm not going to be supporting it because I think you should really have transparency about this. Could there have been somebody else, as Counselor Palmucci said, could there have been somebody else? Is, you know, what are the other options that we have? Why are we here at the 11th hour making this decision and putting it on the taxpayers of the city of Quincy? So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Phelan?
Thank you, Madam President. Dave, just a couple of quick questions. There was no real lease agreement signed with the city because the lease ended and it became city property. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. One question I also have is, on the current cost that's up there, the hall and stuff like that, would that be something you would be looking to go to a third party with? Like, I'm thinking like the, you know, there is a function hall. There is a members lounge. Is that all going to be?
Through you, Madam President. The city is issuing an RFQ that is on the street this week to handle the food and beverage. The city cannot hold a full liquor license, so it's not our intention to run the food and beverage over there, but to issue an RFQ and to pick a partner, if you will, to run both the bar and the kitchen at the facility.
Now, for right now, is the building that you're taking over, that is structurally sound? I've been into several functions there.
Structurally sound, yeah.
Yeah, that that would work to do a hall and to do the members area. But are you going to continue with having a separate place for the members, or is that all going to become one now?
Well, that's a discussion that remains to be had, Counselor. I mean, I think there's a process that we'd have to go through in order to design a new building. So whether they maintain a members lounge, I mean, frankly, what's left of what they call a members lounge isn't something that, you know, I don't think people would desire to go to, quite frankly. I mean, the building is quite old. It's in the basement. So, you know, we'll have a process. We'll have to come before the council to get an appropriation if we get that far when we do the new building. So, you know, that'll all be part of the discussion. I don't think anything's been predetermined at this point.
I'm going to come out in support of this, and I'm going to say why. Because I've also been on the Norfolk County Advisory Board, seeing what they can do with presidents. And you're kind of going in a lot of the same directions that it was with presidents. You know, the county runs the golf course. We give, we put out for bids to do the refreshments there and run the bar that's run there. They pay money to the county, and I don't see this as a loser. I've also seen this when this was run, and there was a lot of animosity between the neighbors. Because at one time, Ward 5 went up around the golf course. And some of the things I saw at that time, Quincy people not being allowed to play in the course, not giving time to the high schools or anything, it was a common occurrence. So where this lease has gone on, I'm in strong support of the city taking it on. I'm a golfer, and the golf has just gone through the roof. COVID made it go through the roof, and it's almost putting the plan together, keeping the golf course going, and bringing it up, I think is just a win for the city. And I think it's also a win to keep open space in this area open. And I think the only way you're going to do that is by maintaining the golf course and bringing that in. That's a very large swath of open space in a beautiful neighborhood up there that is maintained. So I'm going to speak, I'm speaking in favor of this. I intend on voting on it. I support the city taking it over. I think we got a raw deal for 50 years. And I think now the deal we're getting is so it is enjoyed by the whole city. So I'm going to vote for this, and I'm going to speak strongly in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Phelan. Any other questions or comments on this? We have a motion by Counselor Kane, and I was second by Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Kane, I see your hand raised, and then Counselor Dubana.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I mean, I obviously voted to move this forward. It's in Ward 3, so it's an issue that means a lot to me. Dave, maybe, you know, next time or when we move this forward, we can provide some other examples of municipal golf courses that have worked because I know that municipal golf courses have worked other places. And I think that the way that the golf courses run to date is that, you know, people have largely been precluded from participating because of the membership. And I think, you know, you've got George Wright, Franklin Park, DW Fields in Brockton. These are all revenue-generating golf courses, and I think that the same is going to happen for Quincy. I think when you make open the availability of people to participate during times when have been sort of blocked for the main public, you're going to have a different recipe. So I think going forward, let's bring those examples. And obviously, we still have a lot more work to do in terms of presenting to the neighborhood for what's going to happen to this property. But, you know, I look forward to working with you on that.
Thank you. Counselor Dubana?
Thank you, Madam President. Just listening to my fellow colleagues, they make some really good valid points. You know, I don't really remember us going straight into a motion to approve without going through the Finance Committee. I, you know, a couple of my colleagues have some unanswered questions. I don't see the full rush on this being approved tonight or voted on tonight. We can put this on for the next particular meeting and hold this off. I mean, it's a $401,000 appropriation of funding here. And usually, this goes straight into Finance, and then we pull it out and have a discussion in Finance Committee. And then if it's voted on, we could pull it out and vote on it next week. I mean, I don't see the rush on this particularly. We're just, you know, the folks of the city being out there, going door-to-door, being off an election, folks have just want a little bit more transparency. I don't know why we need to rush into putting it right in and not having a discussion. I mean, we're having a discussion now, but there's still some unanswereds. Is there a particular reasoning for that?
Through you, Madam President.
Yeah, please. Thank you.
There is none, Counselor. And if it's the will of the body to have a Finance Committee meeting on this, that's more than acceptable to the administration. And remind the body that this package was presented to them in May as part of the budget process. There was a fairly robust discussion at the council level during the May-June budget process. The Ward Counselor at that time had a couple of unanswered questions relative to this immediate turnkey operation that we've proposed. Those questions, at least to our knowledge, have since been answered. And this is the follow-up to that. It wasn't a rush in June when we first presented it, and it's not something that can't have a subcommittee meeting going forward. That being said, you know, I want to be clear here that we're basically turning a key to this operation from a private operation to a public operation. We don't really have a choice in this matter either, Counselors. The lease is up. The city owns this property. The city did not seek to purchase this property. The city did not choose to own this golf course. The fact is, we do own it. And what's before you is a very baseline level of essentially turning the operation that exists immediately today over to the city. And that's what we plan on doing for the first several months and into the first year. And then we'll be back to this body and the community with a further substantive plan on what is next for the property. At the end of the day, Counselor, that if the city doesn't meet its obligation to operate this golf course, the other, the alternative is basically to sell the property, and nobody wants that. So what's before this body, and there's been nothing that's not been transparent about it. We presented it as part of the budget, that basically that this is the turnkey to the operation of the clubhouse, at the club as it exists right now. We're not making any major changes. We're not changing the operation. We're not changing a great deal of any of the functionality of the golf course off the bat. What we're doing is simply saying, okay, the lease is up. The city now has this obligation. And this is basically the formal process to enter into that obligation, even though it's going to easily be a wash within the budget based upon the club's historic revenues. So again, there's no issue if Chairman McCarthy or Counselor Kane, as the Ward Counselor, Chairman McCarthy is the Finance Chair, want to have a Finance Committee meeting prior to any council meeting before the end of the calendar year. That is totally fine by the administration. That being said, I don't know what we can't discuss. I don't have serious to discuss tonight.
I think, Mr. Walker, that is what I wanted to hear tonight. I kind of wanted to hear it from the administration yourself, exactly the terms of the discussion we're having tonight. If that's the case, then if it's the will of the body to vote on it tonight, then that may be the case. That was a little better understanding and explanation of it. I didn't get a full explanation of why, but I do remember putting this on hold during our budget cycle and having Mr. Murphy come in and discuss it a little bit better. So with that, I'll leave it to my colleagues. I'll leave it to Finance Chair. But that sums it up for me. Just a little bit more transparency from the administration, from you, Mr. Walker. I feel a little more comfortable with it. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Counselor Andronico, then Counselor Mahoney, and then Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Andronico?
Thank you, President Liang, and thank you to Mr. Murphy for joining us tonight. The administration as well for providing just the information we have in front of us. We've mentioned the memo in general a few times this evening, and I'm not necessarily certain if the folks at home know what we're talking about. So just as a briefing to people that are at home, you know, we have a sheet in front of us that shows FY22 breakdown of income and expenses and a projection for FY23. And for FY22, you know, income was up over expenses, $105,000, whereas FY23 projections shows just $30,000, and there is an increase roughly of, you know, 200, or excuse me, $320,000 on expenses. I'm pretty clear just from the memo on the increase in projected revenue for most of the items, but I was just hoping you could walk us through the projected increase in revenue from FY22 to FY23 for just guest green fees and cart revenue, seeing as those are going from $40,000 to $125,000 respectively, and just maybe how we got to that number.
Through you, Madam President. Basically, Counselor, the second column is a projection for a full year versus the first, the last six months, if you will, of fiscal year '22. That's the reason why there's a significant increase in the amount from one year to the next.
Okay, so those two rows, then the $40,000 for a full year would be $80,000. And I just wasn't certain then as to why dues income then is $400,000 for FY22, but for FY23 is $445,000. Those numbers just aren't necessarily tracking for me there.
The dues historically have been collected in the first half of the year. So when we take this over, the first dues collection would be essentially for the calendar year, which would happen in the first half of the fiscal year. So the dues for calendar year '22 would be 22 would be collected in fiscal 22. And the next year, it would be in the first half of the next calendar year, but the second half of the fiscal year.
Gotcha. So I just I was a little unclear on that because I know in the memo it says for the latter half of the year. And then when I look at the chart, it's for the full FY22 fiscal year. And I just, it it was just a little odd because I I figured that might have been what it was, where some of them are split up sort of in half. Like, that makes sense with the bar and food income as well. Those numbers are exactly the same. You're using the same projections. Okay, I I appreciate the the explanation on that. And again, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Mahoney?
Just a quick question. Back in June, when we had the budget meeting or May, we had the budget meeting, I thought we asked for a copy of the lease. And I think when we asked it, I thought I thought the lease was gonna end, from my understanding, the lease was gonna end at the end of this year and we would be taking it over in January. That basically that it would be in operations, the city wouldn't be operating the First Brook Golf Course for the first six months, and then the city would be taking on the ownership of the golf course come January. That's why we're only using six months projections for revenue starting in January. But now you're saying that the city already owns the golf course, which is, when did the lease end? And could we get a copy of the lease saying that we don't have it in this package?
Well, the lease is ending. But wait, hold on a second, if I may, Madam President. By definition, the lease, we still we're still the landlord. A lease doesn't mean we don't own the property. They have the lease. The lease has been extended to the end of the year to get us through that the golf season, as we talked about in June. And the cities operate, the lease ends, for all intents and purposes, it's over now, but it ends on as of January 1st, the city is operating the golf course.
Okay. But we just got done saying that the lease was it has ended. And I realize that, you know, it's it's our land, but you you did, if we go back on this, listen to what yours, you'd say it ended. So the other question that I had was, did we know that this lease was going to be ending, you know, this year? You know, it got extended to the end of this year. But this has been something that's been imminent for a while in the sequence. The First Brook Golf Course lease has been something that the neighborhood has been discussing for years, that their concern was what's gonna happen at First Brook Golf Course. Furthermore, in this memo, it says that you've been discussing it for 18 months. So we've been discussing, the city of Quincy has been discussing for 18 months, kind of doing the research for this. But yet again, you put it into the budget in fiscal year 22. And the line items that you didn't think were gonna get discussed, it got pulled out for us to discuss. Now we're being said, we have to put it in because we didn't want to be, we didn't want to be golf, you know, take care of a golf course, but that's what's up there. We don't want anything to be built up there. So we're gonna take this on and we're gonna go ahead and, you know, we'll figure it out in six months and then we'll do a presentation. So let's take on. But this has been something that has been here. We knew it was a problem and we just sat on it until it's right now blowing up and we have to actually add to add add these people to our tax rolls. And it's very frustrating. I'm just gonna continue to say that that last June, when it will be asked this question, the lease wasn't gonna be ending until the end of the year, do we take it over? So when we look at these numbers, and it's $400,000 that we're gonna put on for the half, the the half year from January until the end, until fiscal year 23, what's gonna be the cost in fiscal year 23? Is it gonna be 400? Is it gonna be 800? 700? What's the what's the cost gonna be? Double?
It won't be quite double. It'll be more than 400. The 400 represents a half year of investment. So it'll be closer to 720, 750 likely in that range.
Okay. So and then, you know, and then to say like when we're when you're talking about, just even this presentation, even with what Counselor Andronico had to ask, and the general public sees none of this. None of, nobody's seeing any of this. Just the memo that we all received. General public doesn't know what we're saying. So the transparency is lacking. And furthermore, the fact that we have these, you know, we're we're gonna have an RFQ, and we're gonna have the likelies. And, you know, your explanation of the dues and the income, that's great. But, you know, that's that's another piece that could be more transparent. In the memo, it says that you you had a waiting list. We don't know how many people are on the waiting list to join. And you have a maximum capacity of 220. There's just a lot of unanswered questions. So I just I just have to ask a question and clarify that because I know I asked back when we had the budget, when does the lease come to an end? And I realize that where the if the land reverts back to the city of Quincy, it's been a golf course all this time, that's a lease that's happening. But, you know, for 18 months, you've been discussing this, you know, with everybody except for the city of Quincy and the city counselors that are being asked to say yes to this. And I know that, you know, I I'm just trying to say that this is something that could have been transparent, there could have been multiple meetings, there could have been opportunities for people to discuss and to get comfortable with this. But instead, it's just being presented in front of us. And and we're saying, when when people say yes to this tonight, you're saying yes to this, and then you're gonna be saying yes to a $5 million project, and we don't know where it's going from there. And it's just, it's a slippery slope. And it just is, it's, again, I'll say again, it's not my poor planning, it's the administration's poor planning. So thank you.
Thank you. I just want to remind folks to, if we get to stick to I statements, I would, as Council President, be very grateful for that. Counsel McCarthy, you had your hand raised, but I believe you said you were all set. I just want to make sure that's the case.
Well, I'll jump in for a second, just to be clear. You know, Counsel DeBona had questions that related to January 1st. And this $400,000, we pulled back out of the Natural Resources Budget because folks wanted to get a little bit better look at it, a little bit better of a breakdown. This is to keep operations going until we get until budget time again. As Mr. Walker stated, it's our land, it's our golf course. There's just a change in operations and we're picking up the ball. We have to keep going with this. And I expect, you know, just as probably Counsel Kane expects, a a presentation for the for the area, for the ward in detail with numbers that we're gonna discuss. But we need to do this tonight to keep it moving, keep the ball moving forward, keep the golf course open, maintained. And that's what I'm looking at tonight. And then I know that folks should pick up the phone, call Council Commissioner Murphy, and look at presentations and other designs that they'll have down the road. So it's pretty easy for me tonight to keep the ball moving. I think Counsel DeBona, you know, got a great clarification from Mr. Walker. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Counsel Palmucci?
I was just, I was just gonna say, essentially, what wasn't my place to say, but what Counsel McCarthy said was, I I don't need any more time on this. I don't think the information that I'm looking for in a policy capacity as to whether or not, you know, there'd be interest in an RFP to run a public course or the privatization of the course. If the administration, that's not the administration's will. It's it's not as though if we put this over for a month, that that information is going to be, you know, presented. So I don't, and those are my questions, you know, before we take on the obligation of close to $1 million a year and a $5 million capital improvement program that's necessary to to make the the golf course run properly. So I, if if, from my, from my perspective, I I don't need the vote to to be delayed. You guys can take the vote tonight. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Harris?
Thank you, President Liang. As I I usually do, and I've always said right from the get go, I support any of my Ward Counselors. They have the pulse of the folks that live in the communities that are in are are involved with this. But I gotta tell you, I, the folks that are members that live in Ward Six reached out to me for the last, since since this topic has been on the table and their concerns. So we have a lot of folks that, depending on me, to support Counsel Kane, I'm gonna support Counsel Kane. He mentions several of the golf courses. Anybody who knows me knows how much I love golf. Unfortunately, after fracturing my back this on Memorial Day weekend, I I I thought that possibly I would never play golf again. I'm hoping to be able to do it and walk a course if I lose a little bit more weight. There are folks in that that have voted for all of us tonight, don't realize that golf courses really, really, if 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 a golf course loses money, somebody should go to jail. Golf course, I mean, unless, especially that community, the fear, I know there was a lot of anticipation. I know folks that live right on the on the street, the road that lives right up, goes right up to First Brook, concerned about condos. You know, talk about green space. There's nothing, nothing nicer, believe it or not, than a golf course. Revenue will come in. I'm very sure, I'm very confident that everything is gonna be fine. I support, I I'd like to make a motion to vote on this immediately if there's nobody else. And I'm I'm in support of this. I know folks, I I understand the folks that are worried about it, but I gotta tell you something. All, there's so many municipalities that have golf courses that are making money, that are pouring money, it creates job, summer jobs. There's so many opportunities that comes with a golf course, which which provides jobs for seniors. And things that are going on up in all that we was mentioned up about President's Golf Course here in Quincy and right on the area, right, right at the border. I I mean, we have seniors, we have folks that get these little things to be able to, jobs that they can go out. And folks have reached out to me and, you know, people talk about knocking on doors and the golf course is a concern. All I can say is that the people who have reached out to me that go to that golf course have asked me from Ward Six about this. And I'm in full support of my, my, of of Counsel Kane, because this is his ward. I support every Ward Counselor. I hope that the at-large counselors will do too. When when somebody brings something up, they have the pulse of their ward. And thank you for that. Thanks.
Thanks, Counsel Harris. Counsel DeBona?
Thank you, Madam President. I think the the discussion tonight is what is needs to be more clear for our our body of of City Council, getting the explanation from the administration, getting the explanation from the Finance Chair.
Point of order, I made a motion to vote immediately.
Counsel Harris, there is, there was already a motion to approve, followed by Counsel McCarthy. And with all due respect, I do want to make sure that everyone does have an opportunity to ask questions and to have a discussion.
Vote immediately, but okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counsel DeBona.
Thank you. I'm just elaborating. It just, tonight was a discussion that was very good and very important. I've had offline discussions with Commissioner Murphy. I've talked to Ward Three Ian Kane about this. And we've had discussions about this with Mr. Walker in the previous months prior to this. We put this on hold in the budget cycle and we're here, we're up for this. But the explanations that I needed to make a vote tonight has been clear. And I think just, I just wanted a little bit more transparency and a little bit more clearer answers to be to be made tonight, and I got them. So I I thank you, everyone, for the discussion, fellow counselors, Finance Chair, and the administration. Thank you. Thank you, Madam.
Any other questions on this item? Okay, I do have one before we move forward. I want to make sure to ask this question myself before we move forward. So this is to you, Madam Otter. Just logistically speaking, with this item, moving forward, it is, again, like we saw in this past year's budget season, moving forward, it will be a line item or a number of line items in the Parks Department. So just, again, logistically speaking, moving forward, if we find that in these next six months, we don't actually generate the revenue that we anticipate, and it becomes, you know, that doesn't offset the cost, moving forward in the future, we can actually move to cut these items from our budget as well, right?
In the, are you talking about the fiscal '23 budget, Counselor?
Yes, correct.
Yes, you could make a cut in that budget.
Okay. I just want to make sure that that was the case with this. Because again, I saw the items coming in this year, and I know that we did make some cuts to it. I just want to make sure that, you know, moving forward, that's the case with this. If we decide, you know, again, the revenues don't offset it to something that we wanted to, we don't see the numbers coming in the way that we like them to, that we can in fact make those cuts moving forward. Thank you, Madam Otter. So, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
No.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
No.
Counsel Falen.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Seven members.
Item passes. Item number two, please, Madam Clerk.
2021-103, a gift for $1,750 for various donors for dear.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve by Counsel McCarthy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Counsel DeBona, oh, sorry, Counsel Kane, I saw Counsel DeBona's name block first. So second by Counsel DeBona. Any questions on this item? Okay, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Andronico. Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Falen.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Nine members.
Item passes. Item number three, please, Madam Clerk.
2021-104, a gift for $25 from Joseph P. Boyd Jr. to Veteran Services in memory of John Butch Mahoney.
Motion to accept.
Yeah, we have a motion to approve by Counsel McCarthy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Andronico. Any questions on this item? Okay, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Falen.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Nine members.
Item passes. Moving on to number four, please, Madam Clerk.
2021-105, gift for $536 from the QMC reunion.
Move approval.
Thank you. Motion to approve by Counsel Palmucci. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel McCarthy. Any questions on this item? Okay, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Falen.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Nine members.
Item passes. Thank you. On to number five, please.
2021-106, a resolve for the City Council seeking a staffing plan for high-rise fire protection.
Waive the reading.
Counsel Palmucci.
Madam President, if I may, yes. I think this resolution speaks for itself. We're we're, before this, before the planning board, the first building of its size, 20 stories, being considered, we have another building, I think the O'Connell Building, 15 stories. As the city gets higher and higher, I think it would be, I think it would be an appropriate time for the the chief or his designated to come before us to talk about the staffing plan for high-rise fire protection. I think it's a little bit different than what staffing's required for non-high-rise, for low-rise fires. So I think it's, it's probably a good, a good time for the City Council to get up to speed on what it means to have these buildings in our city and and make sure that the Fire Department has all the resources they need to to keep everybody safe. So I'd ask it to be referred to the Public Safety and the Ordnance Committee? Sure.
Okay. Would you, Counsel Palmucci, do you want to approve it as well as move it into those two committees?
Oh, yeah, sure. I move approval and and then placement in the Public Safety and Ordnance Committees.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Andronico. Any questions on this item before we move forward? Okay, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Falen.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Nine members.
Thank you. Item passes. Number six, please, Madam Clerk.
2021-107, in ordinance pending Chapter 375.
Waive the reading.
Questions to waive the reading? Go ahead, Counsel Palmucci.
This is another, this is actually an ordinance change relative to the same issues. This is actually, it's a rather long ordinance, but it it mirrors state legislation that's currently pending in the House and the Senate that is supported by the National Firefighters Association. And it has to do really mostly with firefighter safety by making sure there are certain, certain information provided and certain fire protection steps taken during the construction of buildings. Like, one of the things, one of the pieces that's in here, one of the requirements is a fire watch on a, you know, on a halfway constructed building. If it's not fully completed with sprinklers, there would need to be a fire watch when when there's non-construction happening. So essentially, like over uh when, when there's non-construction happening. So essentially like overnight. Um and I, I, I think that's a great idea. You know, I, I can't imagine if it was a windy day and that project up on Hospital Hill caught fire, that the entire city would be vulnerable to uh, to a fire spreading, you know, at night. So um I think there's, I think there's certainly some steps we can take um to improve safety. Not, and it's not only for the residents, it's also for the firefighters. Um I think we saw with that, that fire up by the uh, the Walmart there in Ward Two. Couple of years ago, some, some shortcuts were taken in the construction of the building and it, and it could have really hurt some people. Uh not, not just the people that live there, but also the uh firefighters that are responding to it. So um I would ask that this be put into the uh Public Safety and Ordinance Committee for further consideration.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Counsel Debona. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any votes? Okay, so this will go ahead and move into ordinance and public safety. Thank you, Counsel Palmucci. Madam Clerk, number seven, please.
Twenty-twenty-one dash one zero eight, a resolve. City Council seeking outside legal counsel funding.
Thank you. Would any of the sponsors like to speak on this item?
I can speak on it.
Counsel Ramon.
So this is um, this is just a resolve after finding out that I think it was Attorney Jim Shay has retired and he was the um representative to um to kind of oversee us in the council if we had any questions with regards to really just the LDA. But now we have ordinances, we have zoning that's happening throughout the whole city and we have questions that can come up. And currently what we have is the city solicitor who um, who's really representative of the administration and the city council does not always have um insight into some of the things. And, and I do think it's valuable. I think Attorney Shay was very valuable in some ways, but there are other areas within the city that we're working on that we, that the city council could benefit from having um having our own legal counsel. And that's really just what we're introducing here. And when I was looking at this, I actually went back and I, I asked um for any results to be pulled in this. And I realized that Brian Palmucci had introduced this several years back. So I just, I, I worked with him in regards to it and asked if we could kind of bring this back up. Counsel Palmucci, do you want anything to add to that?
Thank you, Counsel Mahoney. Uh did you want to make a motion before we move forward?
Yeah, motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Palmucci. I actually saw Counsel Kane's hand raised first. I'm going to go to Counsel Kane and then to you, Counsel Palmucci.
Oh, I'm happy to defer to Counsel Palmucci if he has something to say before.
Thank you, Counsel Kane. Go ahead, Counsel Palmucci.
No, I, I don't have much to add other than um, you know, we've discussed this many times. The mayor, regardless of what we vote on here, the mayor is of a very different opinion on this. And I don't think it's likely the council will get um our own um funding for legal counsel. I would say that there is obviously certain times that there is a conflict uh of interest between um our role and the mayor's uh role, the administration's role. So uh it, it would be helpful to have uh the, the situation that comes to mind. And I think this is the, the issue that sparked it is when um the planning director was removed from office by the mayor, even though the charter says that only the um, the city council may remove a, a planning director. And then the legal opinion we got was from the solicitor's office was, no, it's okay. Um so I, I think that's what sparked it. And I'm really disappointed, quite frankly, that that no one told us that Mr. Shay retired until we go looking for answers about the LDA. Um and I, I'd like to know what the it doesn't have to be answered tonight, but I'd like to know what the process is to to replace him, right? We don't have funding to do that. I think there are some substantial issues coming up relative to Fox Rock and their performance under the LDA. And this body does not have an attorney that we can go to for a legal opinion about compliance issues. So I do think there's a need for this. Um and I'll certainly be voting in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Kane and Counsel Andronico.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I remember this came up, I think, in my first term, way back in like sixteen or seventeen. And
It was your first vote, Counselor.
Yeah, and I didn't support it then. Um and I think there's a couple of things. So I, I didn't know about Mr. Shay until just now. So that's news to me, surprise. But I think our relationship was governed uh not, he wasn't our external counsel directly to the city council. He was the city's counsel, if I'm correct. So how is that relationship governed? Can somebody clarify that for me? How is, how is he paid if we didn't have, we didn't have budgetary uh access? Who paid that?
The mayor paid it, but it was, he was the, he was the counsel to the city council. The administration had separate counsel. So it was three lawyers at the table for all those negotiations. It was the city council's lawyer, the city's lawyer, and um the developer's lawyer.
So
Thank you, Counsel Kane. Before you continue, I apologize. Uh Mr. Walker, did you have anything to add to that? Or if not, I'll go back to Counsel Kane.
Counsel Palmucci was correct.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that, Counsel. Go ahead.
So who is Mr. Shay's replacement? For us?
Through you, Madam President. Um to be determined, Counsel, when the time is appropriate that the council needs uh to have a negotiating attorney. He's part of an LDA process.
So has
Probably having that. We didn't, we honestly didn't know that he'd retired until I think Mr. Keery had called him uh a week or two ago about something. And he had said that, that he's no longer of counsel to um the firm that he's with. So um at the point in time where we get to the next LDA, um I, I don't see any real reason why we wouldn't continue that the process that seems to have worked pretty well um previously. And that we would certainly talk with the councils, with the council president, with the body on finding our appropriate replacement for Mr. Shay.
Yeah. Um, okay. So I, I think there's, there's two things. There's one thing being proposed and one thing that's being said. And the one thing that's being said is that we don't have external counsel and this is a resolution to get external counsel. And I don't think that that fulfills us. This is requesting a budgetary line item that is controlled by the council president uh that would then, you know, I don't know how that money would be spent. But I certainly know that uh nine of us don't come to the table, uh you know, either having the same demands for, for legal counsel, nor do we share the same opinions. And so I would be very concerned about a sort of discretionary line of spending by either the uh council president or, you know, I don't know how this money would be allocated. How would we access this council? But if we were to request having some sort of uh a, I don't know, solicitor that would represent the council interest, that's a different story. Uh but just having a bucket of money, uh you know, sixty thousand dollars sitting there, um I'd be curious how we would individually access that, right? I mean, it's one thing, like we've got a budget, small budgets individually for, for postage and for mailings. Um would we each get a, a specific allocation for legal? Um because that would make more sense to me because I think we all come to the place from, you know, or, you know, what if somebody runs a bill up more than others, right? Is there a particular allocation that would be met? Um but in the case of Mr. Shay, if there was something a little more pressing, um you know, to my colleagues uh who were seeking sort of an update, uh I would say, ask, you know, we should find out who's the replacement for Mr. Shay. I'm sure somebody had to have been uh briefed or, or put up to speed on uh the case of the city and, and prior LDAs and relationships in, in real estate development. Um and that seems like a very simple uh request. But I'm, I just, I'm not comfortable with this because I just don't think that, you know, we don't know, not many people approach this as a team sport. And I think that having a, a legal uh, you know, sort of personal legal pot of money, unless it's specifically designed to benefit every, every person on this council, uh you know, it doesn't work. So uh thank you, Madam President.
Counsel Andronico and then Counsel Palmucci.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, uh extend my thanks to my colleagues for putting this forward tonight. Um this actually came up uh during my research with the American Rescue Plan Act funds and just how those would be uh expended. Uh the Fall River uh city council, uh actually in the past year budget, uh got an appropriation of forty thousand dollars for um its own legal representation uh for the first time within their own city history. They allocated uh forty thousand dollars and then hired uh KP Law, which charges them two hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour. Um but just even within that own work, um you know, I, I do see the, the necessary need uh maybe for the city council's own representation. Uh just in Fall River alone, you know, their council and the uh mayoral administrations council down there have conflicting legal opinions on who has the final say on how American Rescue Plan funds uh can be allocated in general. And, and that's as of late August of this year. I'm not sure what the developments have been like since then. Uh and I know what Counsel Palmucci's point. Uh things come up every once in a while where maybe the uh city council and the administration don't agree. And just to have that outside council uh funding available for, for pursuit like that, uh I think is valuable to us and that there are other cities uh within Massachusetts that are pursuing this on their own as well. And I'm sure that we could uh take the lead from them on uh to Counsel Kane's point, what the procedure is for expending those types of funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Palmucci.
Yes, I just wanted to take the opportunity to um answer some of uh my colleagues' questions from uh Counsel Kane. Um so the way that, that Jim Shay uh first of all, the overarching answer is yes, it would be someone who represents, their client would not be one council, it would be the Quincy City Council. So it would be they come before us, you know, we could submit a question to the president like, hey, what control does the city have over this federal money that the administration is spending without any council approval? And then the response would come back to all counselors in a memo or, or before us. Um the issue first arose, again, like I said, when uh planning director was let go, even though the statute is pretty clear that only the council can let go of a, of a um of, of the planning director in Quincy. And we had nowhere to turn to argue our interpretation of the statute, yeah, as a body. Uh the administration had the solicitor arguing his interpretation of the statute. Uh so the client would be the Quincy City Council, not each of us individually or one of us more than the other, but the, but the body itself. Um in terms of Mr. Shay, the way that came about is we had asked for an attorney multiple times, multiple times with no funds to, to hire one. We didn't have one during uh the first LDA with Streetworks, uh when, when um things started coming around again. I don't think he represented us, Streetworks. At some point, the administration uh said that they would use funding to allow us to hire a lawyer. Um at that point, Counselor La Forest, Counselor uh Ramandi and myself formed a subcommittee to hire the attorney. We conducted interviews and accepted um applications or letters of interest from attorneys. We conducted a public interview, uh at which point we hired Attorney Jim Shay. He represented us as the city council during the entirety of, I, I mean, I guess it's almost eleven years at this point, ten years. So maybe it was during the Street, Streetworks stuff. But um and so he was always the, the city council's lawyer that any individual counselor could call up and ask a question. Hey, you know, what does this mean? What does that mean? And he was our voice at the negotiation table for the LDA. Um if I recall correctly, when we voted on the LDA, uh a couple of folks had said that uh Mr. Shay, in fact, was extremely helpful and that it was, it was probably a good idea that we brought him on. Um so uh, so that, that's really the, the issue is just we, I think we need to have an independent legal resource that the body itself can, can go to on legal questions occasionally, rather than having to ask the mayor, hey, we, we don't like uh, we don't like what you're doing and we want another opinion as to whether or not it's legal. You know, if, if it's up to him, I, you know, human nature is I'm not going to give you money to have someone disagree with me, right? So um that's why I think it should be a line item controlled by the um, the council president, very similar to how um the entire budget is controlled by the council president. Right? It's, it's um, it's not specifically, you know, divvied up by her um to the entire, to each individual council, but represents the entire council as a whole. So hopefully that answered the questions, letting you know kind of what we were thinking here.
Thank you, Counsel Palmucci. Counsel Kane?
I, I appreciate the clarification. Um that's not what, what this resolution uh says or calls for. So if, if we want to come back with something that's a little more baked, and are we uh putting this forward with the anticipation that the mayor will support this or will not support this? And, and then if uh he, you know, have you talked to the mayor about this?
And is that a question you'd like to?
Yeah, it's for you, Madam. Uh I don't, I don't
Why don't, why don't you ask Mr. Walker?
Mr. Walker is uh representing the mayor. Is, is the mayor in support of providing the council with a line item for external counsel?
Through you, uh Madam President. Uh I would have to check with him, but I don't believe his opinion uh has changed uh over the course of the last several years in which Counsel Palmucci has presented this. Uh his baseline uh opinion on this is that the city solicitor's office is the council's representation. Policy differences aside, the city needs to have one, speak in one voice when it comes to legal opinions. Having multiple legal opinions, uh regardless of policy differences, uh is not something that is embedded in our charter or really stands to make uh much good sense from a practical standpoint. Um the city historically has always spoken in one voice when it comes to legal matters. Um and that remains, to my knowledge, the mayor's opinion. Now that the LDA is a little bit of a different situation, uh requiring some very substantive uh substantive level of, of negotiation where the council as an active member of that negotiating, active participating in that negotiation, it makes some sense to have uh another set of eyes and another set of hands uh in that sort of scenario. And I'm not going to say that the, there are not other scenarios where that may also be a worthwhile endeavor. But generally speaking, from the bird's eye view, that the, his belief has always been that the city speaks in one voice when it comes to legal representation. He, the solicitor's office does represent this body, represents everyone that represents the city of Quincy. Uh regardless of who that is and regardless of what are the policy issues is necessarily at stake. There's a big difference between having policy discussions and legal opinions. Uh and the legal opinions is something that the mayor generally believes should be, continue to be spoken for in one voice.
So, all right, thank you, Mr. Walker. So um that was one question I wrote down. Does, does the solicitor not represent the interests of the city council? And I, I heard one example of a time when the uh planning director was dismissed and that was called a question. And the opinion went probably in a way that didn't go in line with the perception received. So to my colleagues proposing this, are there other circumstances that have had to do with either uh downtown, real estate, any, any other examples that have to do with, with legal issues that have similarly required external counsel where the solicitor has not represented the interests of the city council?
If I may, Madam President?
Please.
I, I would think Counsel Andronico's example is a perfect example as to the, the spending of the federal money. That's something that I, I could see as an ideal referral by the council president to ask legal counsel what role the council has with the expenditure of the federal monies.
So this is, yeah, I, I appreciate that. And this was in the context, though, of real estate in the downtown. So Mr. Shay not being our counsel anymore or not, he's retired, we don't have access to him anymore. So I'm just trying to understand what are the circumstances that this, and in the, in the, our, you know, the recovery money is a new thing. And Counsel Andronico brought that up. You didn't bring that up. You brought this resolution forward. So what, has there been another time that the solicitor has not represented the interests of the city council?
Well, first of all, you're misconstruing my words. I have never said that the city, the city solicitor has not represented the interests of the council.
I never misconstrued. I asked a question. I asked a question.
We could if, if we could just keep it so that
With other
I'm not going to debate you. I'm not going to debate you. The motions to resolutions
I'm not debating you. I'm asking you a question to support or refute this.
Do you both, Counsel Kane and Counsel Palmucci, if we could just make sure that there's one person speaking at each time, particularly over Zoom, it's very difficult to hear when there's more than one person speaking.
Oh, that's fine. I asked a question and he just ran away. I asked a very simple question.
Counsel Kane, that, you don't, that's unnecessary. It's, that's, that's unnecessary.
I'm trying to support you or not. So please
Counsel Kane, if there's another question that you have, please feel free to ask it. But I will, I will just, full disclosure, and I've done this before and it's not personal. I will put folks on mute because when we're speaking over each other, we can't hear one another. And I want to make sure that we can at least be respectful and have to form with one another.
I asked one simple question. Has the solicitor not represented the city council's interest?
Okay, and that's a question that you have directed to the sponsors of this board, of this, correct? Okay, so do either of the folks who sponsor this resolve have a response? And if so, Counsel Kane, if we could just let them finish speaking first and then we'll resume, you know, back to you with questions.
I think I've, I've answered the questions sufficiently. Let's, let's move on with this.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Palmucci.
Okay, I can, I can say that, that I have concerns that now our city solicitor is moving into a developer, as a developer and to, as a personal developer. So I'm concerned about that too moving forward. So it's a little difficult when we have zoning issues that are coming before us. Um and the suggestion is that, you know, whatever's on the table now will be able to be moved forward. And that's one of the projects that are going on. So I have concerns about that. I think we should have opportunities to be able to discuss things. And the ARPA money is a perfect example. I've been talking about the ARPA money as well as Counselor and Andronico has. And um it's very apparent that the administration has a different opinion as how this money could be spent. It doesn't have to be in regards to um, for shaving. I think it has to do with the fact that there are multiple complicated things that are coming before us and we sometimes need to be able to have answers that may be able to answers that may be able to, might be legal that we want to, we want, we want answers to.
No, I, I appreciate that, counsel Mahoney. I just wanted to be specific because this is, this isn't the first time. And so, you know, wondering what sort of spurred this? So you just given other examples, which I appreciate. But I still want to know what's the mechanism for controlling this and if the mayor is actually going to support it and give it to us. Because otherwise, I'd like to find a solution to the problem instead of just throwing this out there as a potential solution that won't actually happen. So I appreciate you bringing this forward.
I, I apologize. I apologize, counsel Yang, I realize I'm talking over. I appreciate the conversation. And I do think that sometimes these resolves, either they're too prescriptive as to what we're going to do or not, but I do think that, as we move forward. But this is something that I think when I found out Attorney Shea was no longer with us and that we had requested Fox Rock to come back before us to discuss the LDA because everything in that LDA has changed. Now we don't have legal counsel. When counsel Andronico asked regards to the ARPA money and the answer was, I don't have to respond to the council, that's a little disturbing as well. So there's a lot of things that are out there and it's limited to, to how we can get a response back. Because if the answer, I don't come, come play in your sandbox and I'm not going to answer to you. I had a hesitation and I realized it was a memo, but I thought it was going to be a little bit more of a presentation. Forward, going forward, it's going to be, it's going to be more money that's going to be coming to us. We will have those discussions. But, you know, there can be, there can be times that we're going to want to have, we're going to be able to want to have those questions. And it's not just going to be the administration answering us back. I know that I asked you questions in the past with legal information when it came to the Adams Academy. And I was, I was, I basically put down and saying, who are you speaking to? Because I speak to all of the people. That's a concern to me. And I'm bringing up something I'm concerned about. And this solicitor is basically harassing me to say that I need to let them know who, who I'm specifically talking to, wherever it is I'm talking to. Those are concerns that I have. Those are the reasons why I went back and researched the resolves that were done in the past. And I found this one that was done by counsel Paimucci and I reached out to him and I asked him what the, what the influence was. That's why we're here tonight to discuss it. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel Kane. Did you have any other questions?
I'm good. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Counsel Andronico?
Thank you very much, President Liang. And I did just want to clarify that I know the, the administration has expressed a willingness to come before the council to talk about the allocation for the ARPA funding. And I am looking forward to that finance committee meeting, hopefully sooner rather than later. But I did just want to clarify that as well. But I had originally raised my hand because I'm not sure if the sponsors of the resolution were sure that we wanted to ask for sixty thousand dollars in FY twenty-one, considering we are in FY twenty-two, or if we should make an amendment to that. I'm not sure if the ask is for the current fiscal year or for the following fiscal year in the budget that we have not seen. So is it FY twenty-three? Or is it the current fiscal year?
We'll accept that as a friendly amendment to FY twenty-two.
So the current fiscal year that we're in, just to clarify. Okay, thank you. I have made that friendly amendment and it seems as though the sponsors have accepted. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel Andronico. Okay, so there is a motion to approve by counsel Mahoney, seconded by counsel Paimucci with the amendment to change it to fiscal year twenty-three. Are there any other questions on this item before we move forward?
Point of clarification, fiscal year twenty-two.
Oh, sorry. All right. Thank you, counsel DeBona. I did see you have your hand raised for
No, I was just saying twenty-two, two to two.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, folks. Keep me on my toes tonight. All right.
For the friendly amendment, yes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counsel Andronico?
Yes.
Counsel Kane?
Yes.
Counsel DeBona?
Yes.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney?
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Paimucci?
Yes. Is counsel Harris okay?
Counsel Phelan?
Yes.
President Liang?
Yes.
Nine members.
Item passes. Thank you. So moving on to
Clarification, I just want to, there was a question directed to me. My heart monitor went off, but it's all good, counsel Paimucci.
Good, good. All right.
All right. We're all good? Yes? Okay. Moving on to the approval of previous meeting minutes. This is for October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, counsel DeBona. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, my counsel Phelan. Are there any questions on the meeting minutes before we move forward? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes passed. Communications and reports in the mayor, other city officers and city boards. Seeing none. Unfinished business and proceeding meeting. All right, moving on. Reports of committees. Okay, presentation of petitions, memorials and remonstrance. I'd like to recognize counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, Madam President. I think there's, everybody on tonight knew Frank McCauley in some capacity. Frank, I grew up with the McCauleys down in Howes Neck. And Frank was something else. You know, reading his obituary that was in the Sun, not only did he cover the elected official positions at large ward, school committee, and then finally mayor, but his community involvement down the neck and in Quincy was unbelievable. He passed on November third, which was the fortieth anniversary of his election as mayor, age of ninety-one, thirty-two years as an elected official. And just a wonderful guy with a wonderful family. Really loved Howes Neck, loved the city. And tomorrow, the funeral is at ten AM down at Most Blessed Sacrament down in Howes Neck. I'm sure it'll be a packed house. I know that there is a flyby here with the procession leaving the funeral home at nine thirty. It'll come across the commons out front of city hall and then down to Howes Neck. There's, there's so many stories I know everybody has of, of Frank. My mother was a, a year older than him and, and grew up with him down there. And, you know, he had that nickname, Brains. And loved the finance world, president of the bank, loved to get in conversations with anybody, especially elected officials on what you're doing and what's going on. He also, early on, was an altar boy at Most Blessed Sacrament. And his partner in crime as an altar boy was Walter Hannan. So they both were altar boys down there. Plenty of stories they told me never to tell. And I'll, I'll leave it at that. But wonderful, wonderful family and prayers and thoughts go out to the McCauleys. Thank you, President.
Thank you so much, counsel McCarthy. Any other presentations of petitions, memorials and remonstrance? Okay, moving on to motions, orders and resolutions. Okay, and lastly, scheduling of committee meetings and public hearings. We do, as a reminder, have our next meeting on Monday, November fifteenth. We're going to be starting with a public hearing at six thirty PM for short-term rentals and ordinance, moving on to the regularly scheduled council meeting. So are there any other scheduling of committee meetings for this evening? Okay, seeing none. And do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.